Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's special meeting and regular workshop. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal actions on specific items and during the workshops, only discusses issues with those formal actions taken. The agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is being also televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 20-28-7, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to Open Public Meetings Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and or questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager, or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with that out of the way, the little housekeeping, I also want to be consistent in making sure that we are adhering to the CDC guidelines and having our social distancing. We have disinfected this area and we have sanitizer in the back and continuing to try to protect others with these guidelines that they set for us. And hopefully, we can remain either the same or lower our numbers for the amount of positive detections of COVID at this time. So I appreciate everybody's assistance and cooperation with that. And also, just want to make a note and thank Mayor Protem Blanche Barajas and Councilwoman Zarroch. We just literally, several minutes ago, got out of a subcommittee meeting interviewing for the Inclusivity Commission. So thank you for your hard work and everything you do. With that, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present.
All seven here.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Shall we all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And first item on the special meeting is bid rejection, Peanuts Park Farmers Market renovation project. Mr. Rat-Kye, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item brought before you this evening is rejection for the Peanuts Park renovation bid. Formal request for bid submittal was for the Peanuts Park Farmers Market Plaza renovation was issued on April 20th, 2020, with the formal opening, the public opening, being on May 20th. One bid was received, which we opened at that time. The loan bid exceeded the engineer's estimate for the project by approximately 17%. Due to the federal funding programs associated with this project, staff was required to conduct a cost analysis. From this, it was determined that it exceeded a 10% threshold that we typically hold for these type of projects based upon the engineer's estimate. And therefore, the best course of action due to one bid is to reject the bid and re-advertise for future bids. During this time, staff will be evaluating the result, seeing how our bid package can be more marketable for re-advertising. And with the item brought forth this evening, we ask that council approve the resolution in front of you, rejecting the bids and authorizing the city manager to re-advertise and seek additional bids.
Thank you, Mr. Rat-Kye. Would you say that, first question I have is, would you say that, how much did COVID have to do with all this? I mean, this was back in April, but do you think we're going to struggle to find other contractors that would be interested in this work?
It's hard to determine whether COVID played a role in that or not. We did see a lot of interest from the region, but when it came to bid time, we had one bid. See, City Manager Zabel has his mic on as well.
Since then, WashDot has closed down their projects, so a lot of hungry contractors out there. We might have a little bit better luck next time around. This one had some significant errors in it that just couldn't be overcome. We struggled, I think, staff-wise, because we know how important this project is to the community and to the council, as one of the council's goals. And we think it's best to reject it and go back out, given some of the flaws that were in the proposal.
Well, hopefully, things have changed now and, you know, with many people have been out of work, maybe things will change. So with that, anybody from the council have any questions or comments?
This is Councilmember Maloney, I have one quick one. Mr. Rat-Kye, can you give an estimate of how long do you think this may impact the schedule for when we were going to get this project done?
It all depends on what the new bid climate would look like, but we're still aiming for an opening prior to the Cinco de Mayo celebration of 2021. Hopefully, gathering restrictions will allow us to have a very public and personal opening of the park at that time. So as it stands right now, we're still aiming to make that mark, weather permitting, through winter construction and the bid climate. But we're optimistic we can still make that.
We may have lost a couple of months, but hopefully, we can still hit our big target.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Anybody else? If not, Mayor Protem, would you like to entertain a motion?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I move to approve Resolution Number 3973, rejecting all bids for bid number CP5-PK-8R-16-02, Peanuts Park and Pasco Farmers Market renovation, and furthermore authorize the city manager to call for bids in the same manner as your original call for this project.
Perfect. There's been a motion for Resolution 3973. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilmember Maloney, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been seconded by Councilmember Maloney. I'll give one more opportunity for anybody that have questions or comments. If not, then, there's been a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? The passenger in Adams Lee. Thank you. So I'm going to adjourn the special meeting and open up the regular meeting. Let me go, the regular workshop meeting for tonight. And we're going to go right down the order here to Item 4, verbal reports from council members. Anybody want to comment, report anything for last week? Okay, then we'll move right along into Number 5, items for discussion. We have a local road safety plan. Mr. Worley, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, sir. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're going to hear a presentation about a document that was prepared called the Local Road Safety Plan. And a little introduction to that. The plan was developed through a consultant, DKS, and Brian Chandler, who is the author of that report, is going to give the presentation tonight. Part of the reason we did this study is because it's good to know where our critical safety problems are within the city, taking a look at all the data that's available and then having traffic experts like Brian take a look at it and give us some suggestions on how we might be able to increase the safety at those areas, and that's what this plan does. The other thing that it does is that there are grant opportunities to build projects that help increase safety and reduce crashes. And one such grant program requires that this plan be developed and that projects from this plan be the ones that go after the grant funding. And so that's been done, and Brian's going to talk about that a little bit in his presentation tonight. And then the other issue is that we just recently submitted another grant application, and you get extra points for your grant project if you can say that you have an adopted local road safety plan. So our goal would be to share this information with you tonight, answer any questions that you might have, and then if it's acceptable to council, bring it back next week for adoption. And therefore, the other grants that we go after will score a few extra points to the point where we may actually get additional funding to get some additional safety projects constructed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Chandler of DKS and Associates.
All right, thank you, Steve. Thanks, everyone. I appreciate being here. Quick check on my audio, is my sounding okay?
You're coming in really good here, Mr. Chandler.
All right, thank you, sir. Good. Thank you again for having me. I appreciate it. Yeah, as Steve mentioned, I'm the Director of Safety for DKS Associates. I'm in Seattle, Washington, and I lead our safety efforts for our Seattle office, but I also lead safety up and down the coast and also in Texas. We have offices in a number of states. I previously was a practitioner. I'm actually from the Midwest originally. I was a traffic safety engineer at Missouri DOT at the state level. Also spent the time as an employee with the Federal Highway Administration, working in safety. So it's definitely been, my career's been based on this. I was excited to get to work with Steve and his team earlier this year, and I'm looking forward to bringing you the overview of the plan to you today. And yeah, please, I'll try to pause on each slide. Please feel free to bring questions if you'd like to. I'm throughout and interrupt me as we go, and if you'd like to save questions to the end, that's fine too. So whatever works best for you. And with that, I think Zach, maybe, or someone is on the other end doing the slides for me. So apologize if I don't know who exactly that is, but somebody's taken care of.
We got you covered.
Yeah, I think it's Zach. Zach, do you got this for us?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right, thanks in advance, Zach. Yeah, ready for the next slide? All right, so the agenda today, just briefly here, over the next few minutes, we'll be talking about the purpose and need of the Local Road Safety Plan, how we develop the plan. We'll go through the four main steps to put together a safety plan for a city. We'll talk about two specific grant applications that we submitted together for the Washington State DOT City Safety Program that occurred this year, and then talk a little bit about where we're at status-wise and some suggested next steps for moving forward to continue making roads safer in Pasco. Next slide. And next slide. Talk a little bit about the purpose and need, why we even do this. So the question is, why even develop a road safety plan? And the primary answer is that over the last five years, there have been seven traffic fatalities in the city and 43 people have been seriously injured. And one thing that we can do with safety planning is identify what some of those safety needs are so that we can develop potential solutions. One thing that we know about safety is there are some aspects of traffic safety that can be random, but there also are some aspects of traffic safety that are predictable. I've been doing this for 20 years now and have a pretty good sense of both. And there are some areas of this that we really do know how we can make things better. And so going through this process, identifying where we've seen safety needs based on crash history, allows us to be able to predict where future crashes might occur and try to interrupt that before it happens. And as Steve had mentioned, and I had just mentioned, the WashDot City Safety Program happens every other year, and that does require a local safety program, I'm sorry, a local road safety plan in order to apply for that grant funding. So completing this in February allowed us to apply for WashDot grant funding in March.
Mr. Chandler? Please. Mr. Chandler, just have a quick question. This is Mayor Martinez. If you can go back to the slide, please. Just out of curiosity, I don't know if you have this information on top of your head, but of the seven people that died in the traffic collisions from 2014 to 18, do you know if those were high speeds or what speed they were going?
That is a great question. I don't have that handy.
Okay.
But I'll tell you what, that's definitely information. We do have data on each of the crashes, and we are going to get into what some of the most common risk factors in the city were. Speed, actually, within the city, speed wasn't identified as a factor in the majority of crashes. Now, in the majority of severe injury and fatal crashes. Now, I don't know for sure about those seven. I'd have to go back and take a look. But it is a good question, because it is, speed is becoming an emerging issue nationally. I mean, it has been for many years. We tend to not see it as often within city limits, partially because of congestion, partially because speed limits are relatively low. But we do sometimes see it on the outskirts, or as you get closer to the outsides of the city limits, particularly as you have annexations in more areas that had been rural, we can see higher speeds there as well.
Okay. I was just curious, because I wanted to see if we can differentiate if we're talking about local streets or, you know, higher-speed streets, and that would help us make decisions when we, you know, set speed limits and things of that nature. But thank you for that information. We'll see if we can get that later. Please proceed.
Yeah, and one thing that we definitely do know is where these crashes occurred. And I'll show you that in just a second. We've got a couple of pin maps where I can show you those. So yeah, go ahead, back to the next slide. So developing the plan took us... Yeah, please.
Sorry for interrupting. Just one quick question. So just to make sure I understand, this doesn't count any of the freeways or highways, something that's run by the state? Is this only for Pasco's local roads? Is that correct?
That's right. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that question. Yeah, these are just roadways under the jurisdiction of the city. Yep.
So if someone gets in an accident and there's an injury or fatality before an on-ramp onto our streets, then that would not be counted and covered under this study?
If that ramp or that intersection is maintained and operated by the state, then that's correct.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I want to make that differentiation, because there are some cities where the ramp intersections, so you take a ramp down and then you hit a signal. Sometimes those signals are operated and maintained by the city. So that's the kind of distinction there. So just kind of an overall look again. This is looking a little bit further back. Now, we're looking at 10 years of data, so from 2009 through 2018, this 10-year time chunk, you can see both from the top graphic there, the number, just the frequency of fatal and serious injury crashes combined, and then below, all the crashes that have occurred and been recorded. And again, these are reported crashes that have a police report with them. We know from experience that there are many crashes, especially property damage crashes, that are not reported. I mean, heaven forbid anyone, you know, listening to this right now has ever been in one that they haven't called in. But that happens, right? We know that there are some, especially very minor crashes, that don't get reported. So we work with the data that we have, and the data that we have tell us that in both these cases, with severe crashes and with all crashes, that the trend in the City of Pasco is going up. So over the last decade, you can see both those dotted trend lines are going up in terms of the number of crashes. Frankly, this isn't surprising, given just the growth of the city, right? Lots of metrics are going up, right? And so this is one that tends to track with traffic volume, tends to track with economic growth in the city. So seeing this isn't particularly surprising, but it is concerning nonetheless. Next slide. And I'm going to show you two maps. This is first a bit of a heat map of frequency of crashes. So in this case, the darker the circle or the darker the area that you see, the more frequent the crashes were. This isn't looking at severity. Fatal or severe crashes didn't get any extra bonus points. This is just showing you where more crashes occurred, just looking at frequency. And then the next map just shows that, this actually is looking at severity. So you can see here, there's three different icons. Maybe a little tough to see, because it's zoomed out a bit here, but you've got just the dots for all crashes or all other crashes that are not severe injuries or fatalities. You can see where the serious injury crashes, the triangles occurred, and then the Xs there are the fatal crashes. So that may, Mr. Mayor, start to go to some of your questions of where the severe crashes occurred. Now, one thing that we've learned over the years is even though we do see where the crashes occur, sometimes we can get a little hung up on that and a little stuck on, hey, somebody got killed at this location, and we need to go spend a million dollars to fix that location. But what we typically find, especially with severe crashes, is that the location of those severe crashes tend to be relatively random from year to year. And so what we need to do is step back a little bit and think about what the most common risk factors are. And so that's the next thing that we do in our process, is we take a look and say, okay, of all the crashes, of all, I'm going to look at the very bottom of this graph first. The title of this chart is showing us the most common fatal and serious injury collision factors. So these are those conditions or those situations that are the most common factors in fatal or serious injury crashes. These are not additives. So for example, and you can see the first one, in more than 30% of fatal and serious injury crashes in the city, there is an angle crash. We'll call those a T-bone crash or a 90-degree angle crash sometimes. That typically happens at an intersection, either with someone pulling out from a stop sign, maybe running a stop sign, or someone running a red light are the most common times that those occur. You can see that over 15% of fatal and serious crashes involve pedestrians. About 10% involved left turns, and then over 10% involved someone, a vehicle hitting a fixed object. So we took a look at that first chunk there. Another thing that I found down below, you can see overturn is listed. I ended up combining overturn and fixed object, because those two sometimes go hand in hand. Now, one thing to note about this graph, these are not additives, so you can't add, I can't add overturn to fixed object, because the vehicle might have overturned and hit a fixed object. So in that case, it would only count once. It wouldn't count. You can't stack these bars on top of each other. But what we can do is take a look at what the most common risk factors are. And what we found there on that list on the right is those top four, angle crashes, the left turn crashes, typically again at intersections or driveways, pedestrian-involved crashes, and roadway departure crashes are the four types that are the most common crash types that result in serious injuries or fatalities in Pasco. And then another element that we look also at is looking at the different types of roadways. So we may look at things like speed limit or cross-section, number of lanes, types of intersection. And one additional item that we found were that a high percentage of these were occurring at signalized intersections. So that was the fifth one that we brought on that wasn't just a crash type. One thing that is interesting on this one, just to point out, you'll see down towards the bottom is rear-end crashes. Rear ends tend to be pretty high in frequency. We tend to have a lot of rear-end crashes in most cities. But the severity of those is relatively low for a number of reasons. One, rear-end crashes happen a lot in signalized arterioles, which are relatively low speed. Vehicles are made to be hit front to front or front to back. And so the way the airbags are made, the way the seat belts are designed, if you're hitting somebody directly in a rear-end crash, it's very difficult, frankly, for them to get hurt or killed in that crash. We've, you know, the airbag may go off, or things are, people tend to get hurt or killed more often in weird angle crashes, either 90-degree or some diagonal angle, where neither their body nor the vehicle is really designed in such a way to absorb those crashes in quite the same way. I just want to bring that, sometimes that surprises people that rear end is that far down the list. All right, next slide. So we took these different common factors and made a table. Those common factors you can see are along the top. So if you turn your head sideways, you can see the angle crashes, pedestrians, left turn angles, roadway departure, signalized intersection. Those are the five that we just saw on the previous slide. We added a high crash rate. The one thing that we do like to see is, we want to be sure that if there are some locations that just have a high rate of crashes, and that is crashes per entering vehicle, is trying to normalize for locations that maybe don't have a lot of traffic volume but have had a high number of crashes. We wanted to give them essentially a bonus point. And then we just went through the system, went through all the roadways. In this case, we first looked at intersections, looked at all intersections in the city, and identified those intersections that really came up high on the list in each of these areas. And those intersections that came up high on more than one of these areas got additional points. You can see that total on the left is just a simple addition of, for example, 20th and West Court Street came up as high on the list of angle crashes, pedestrians, left turn, and it was a signalized intersection. And so we took that, took a list. You can see here, there's probably some locations that you would expect to see, maybe a surprise or two, especially as you go further down the list. Those locations that tend to have a number of these different types of crashes, these are crash types that we know lead to severe outcomes. So these will lead to serious injuries and potentially to fatalities. And next slide, Zach? We also took a look at corridors. So that first slide was intersections. This is looking at the corridors between intersections and identifying some corridors that we saw came up as clustering crashes along those corridors of these crash types, so that these risk factors were factored in there on corridors as well. Next slide. And this is just a culmination of those two lists. And I just graphically took those two. The letters are the 14 locations that we identified as intersections from the data, and then the, I think there are four different corridors that I've got, you know, kind of circled there in the dotted lines. One thing to note is we did this before I came back to Steve and said, hey, Steve, what things are you already doing, or what have you just gotten done doing? Because let's not forget, we're looking at five years of data. And probably a good example here is that letter F on the right side of the graphic at Oregon and Lewis. You all know this better than I, but Oregon Avenue recently had an overlay. There's been some, you know, work done there on that roadway on Oregon Avenue. It's got a new cross-section. It's got curb and gutter, new pavement. So a lot of work's been done over there. And so even though we're seeing some dark colors pop up, we're seeing that intersection at Lewis pop up, we know that just recently some work's been done there. Other side of the city, in the northwest part, at Burden and Road 68, a couple of things we know are happening there. You put in a red light camera about a year and a half ago, and they've been doing red light, running enforcement there. I know our company is actually doing some design work right now for some restriping and some other things there. So you've already established, or you identified that as a need. You've already established a couple of treatments that you're looking to do there. So we didn't end up focusing on those two areas as examples as part of this plan moving forward, because you'd already been, you already had work planned there. So after that discussion of, here's some things that we found in terms of need just from looking at the data, we had a discussion about what's already happening, and then go ahead and go to the next slide, Zach? Then from that, we identified three priority treatments that we thought would make the most sense in the near term. And the first one was at North Road 28 and West Sylvester Street. This is a traffic signal redesign that's already happening. There's a signal redesign project. And so what our recommendation here was, was looking to add a northbound left turn lane to address a left turn need. What we did at these three locations, as we looked into some more detail on those crashes, I'm not going into that detail to save us time today, but the report goes into more detail on those. So if you want to pull up the full report, you can see more about our recommendation there at 28 and Sylvester Street. I am going to talk about the other two, because the other two, we applied for grant funding with WashDot. So I'm going to talk about those in a little bit more detail. Very simply, 10th and Lewis Street is, we recommended an active signal, a head warning sign that I'll discuss in detail here in just a second. And on West Sylvester Street, we suggested a road diet, which is a reconfiguration of the lane striping. And again, I'll talk about that in just a minute. Before I do that, I've been talking for a bit here. Any questions that I skip, go too fast? Also gives me a chance to take a sip of water.
Nope.
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano. I do have a question, and I know it's addressed in the materials, the entire report. You mentioned the red light cams, and it says in the report that the data is forthcoming. I know you're not part of that, but maybe for Director Worley or Mr. Zabel, when do we anticipate having that data that we can share with the public as to how effective those cameras in those two locations have been?
Actually, I can take that. Steve, do you want me to, go ahead?
Yeah, it's interesting that you mentioned that, because actually, Brian is doing that work. Yeah, we've just sent some data over to him today, and we got them under contract to evaluate the data, and we proposed to bring that back to council and answer those very questions.
Okay.
Yeah, we just kicked that project off a couple of days ago and just got the first set of data. I haven't even opened your email, Steve. I know, I know we received that today. And so we're taking a look at that. So yeah, very timely question, Councilman.
No, I appreciate it. I guess generally, we're talking month, months, or, you know, just, do we have a timeline?
Yeah, I think our plan was to do the study in a couple of months. So I would guess, and yeah, Steve, this would definitely be in your bag, I look more than mine, maybe a September or October presentation, depending on how the analysis goes.
Okay.
Good question, Councilmember. Way to keep the consultant on in line.
Hey, you know.
Yeah, keep us on our toes for sure. That's good. Yeah, and we'll get into that when we get there. There's a lot of limitations to that. There's a lot of limitations to that, as you might imagine, and we don't have time to talk about, I'll talk about that in detail whenever we give that. But very small amount of after-data, you know, as you would imagine, because you just put the cameras in and just started doing citations in August, and then COVID hit in March. And so there's very little information to work with, but I'm excited to see what we can glean from the little bit of data that we do have. So yeah, thank you for that question. All right, so talk about the safety grant applications next. So go ahead, Zach, to the next slide. Thank you. As mentioned, the WashDOT City Safety Program has a call for projects every two years. And so WashDOT essentially takes federal safety funding, and they flow a chunk of that federal safety funding down to the local agencies. Every two years, they have a city program. Every two, the other year, the odd numbered years, they have a county program. And so twenty-twenty was the year for the grants for the city program. They were due in early March. And so we took these two locations that are circled here, Tenth and Lewis and Sylvester Street, and put together grant applications for those as part of this, the same contract that we had with the city. Next slide. So very quickly, at Tenth and Lewis, the thing that we saw here that caught my eye is that of the angle crashes that occurred at the signal, which is actually in the background of this photo, I'll describe why that is in a second, is seven of the eleven angle crashes that occurred at the signal involved northbound drivers going into the signal from this direction along Tenth Avenue. The reason for that, I think, is that there's a little bit of confusion happening here. There's a couple of things. So if I'm approaching this signal, there's a railroad track right here. I'm probably telling you things you already know. These are things that I learned. And there's a railroad track, there's an intersection, you can see the pickup coming in from the east. There's, you can't really tell that, there's some curvature in this roadway that's a little bit hard to see from this, just Google street view. There's vegetation there with the trees. Essentially, there's just a lot going on. And so it didn't surprise me that whenever we looked at the crash diagram, a lot of the crashes were occurring from this direction, coming from the south to the north. So what we're recommending, we hit the button one more time, Zach? I think I've got a pop-up on this one. Yeah, is an actuated warning sign. So this, you know, we use warning signs a lot at intersections. This one in particular has a beacon on top. That flashing beacon on top would be tied into the traffic signal. So it doesn't just flash all day long. One thing that we found is that static beacons that just flash all day tend to get ignored. But in this case, the beacon only comes up and flashes whenever the signal goes to yellow. And so every cycle, whenever the northbound signal goes yellow, this starts to flash to tell the driver that there's a signal ahead that they need to stop at. And then when it goes, it stays flashing through the red, and then whenever it goes to green, then that beacon turns off. And then it pops up again in the next yellow phase for the northbound drivers. So the idea there, I'm going to the next slide, Zach. There's actually some data here on how effective these tend to be. This is a little bit surprising based on how inexpensive this treatment is, but we've seen a sixty-two percent reduction in angle crashes from this treatment, which is a pretty big deal for such a low-cost treatment. There is a little bit of work. I mean, the beacon can usually be powered solar, but we're going to need to do, you're going to need to, you know, you've got to connect this, hard connect it to the signal cabinet to be able to tie it to the signal. So you may go ahead and drop power at the same time. Again, that's, you know, that decision can be made during design. But the general idea here is that we've added a feature that helps make the decision easier. The one, we're being sure that the drivers know that there's a signal coming up, so even if the, if it's the light's green, at least there's the warning sign. But then more importantly, whenever that signal is yellow or red, that they're getting a flashing beacon at that location. Any questions on this one? Okay. West Sylvester's a little bit more going on here. So this is, the project here is looking at converting West Sylvester Street from a four-lane cross-section to what we call a road diet, or a reconfiguration, or a reallocation. Some people call it rightsizing. And the general concept here is that four-lane undivided roadways in kind of urban and suburban areas tend to be our least safe. There's a lot of just kind of wonky stuff that happens on them. They were often designed in the sixties or seventies in situations where we didn't have much traffic and didn't have a lot of turning movements, and so it wasn't that big a deal. But as we get additional turning movements, we tend to have a lot of conflicts with that particular cross-section. And we've seen that here. So on this stretch of West Sylvester, from Route fifty-four to the west, over to, in my west, to North Third Avenue to the east, there have been over the last five years two-hundred-and-seventy crashes along this corridor. One was a fatal crash, and three were serious injury crashes. And then just kind of for information, traffic volume here is about eighty-six hundred vehicles per day. Road diets are very commonly used at anywhere up to ten thousand, even to twelve or fifteen thousand vehicles a day without much trouble, and even above fifteen thousand. There's some locations here in Seattle that go up to twenty thousand or so that have been successful with a three-lane road diet as well. Next slide, Zach. To talk about what this even is, you can see the before-after condition on the left side of your screen shows this four-lane cross-section. And one thing to kind of think about is if you're a vehicle either trying to just go straight through, and there's maybe somebody slower in the right lane, or if you're a vehicle that wants to turn left into a driveway or into an upcoming intersection, that you're using the left lane. And so that combination of the fast lane as the left lane, and people slowing or stopping to make a left turn, because you've got to wait for, you know, two lanes of traffic coming at you, say from the south in this example, that, that just creates all kinds of stuff. You get weaving between the two lanes, we get rear-end crashes of people who are stopped to turn left, we get people who are nervous that think they're going to get rear-ended, and so they take a too-small gap and they get hit by vehicles coming the other way. And so what we found is a really solid solution to this is going from a four-lane section to a three-lane section. We tend to see very little, if any, reduction in operation, which seems a little odd until you actually see it in action. And what we identify is that these four-lane cross-sections with a lot of turning movements really weren't operating that well anyway. You weren't getting the flow that you maybe thought you would theoretically whenever you see these in real life. And so the three-lane section, because now you're separating the movements, you've got left turners in the middle, you've got through traffic on the outside, and then you've got other uses on the outside of that. That could be bicycle lanes, like in this example. You can see the, the kind of other view there of before and after, shows that you've got parallel parking in this case, and you've got some bicycles, and then you've got sidewalks on the outside of this, of that. This isn't necessarily a design recommendation of exactly what should be done on Sylvester Street. This is what we use for our high planning level estimate for the sake of the, for the sake of the grant application. And the beauty behind road diets is you essentially can do them with striping. You remove stripe and you put down stripe. Sometimes you can do them with an overlay job, if you're going to overlay the road anyway, that's a great time to consider a reconfiguration of the lane, of the lanes. And there's just, there's just a lot of interesting things that you can do with that once you determine that you don't have to have all four of those lanes for general-purpose motor vehicles.
I would make a comment that it's possible probably going to help from drag racing. I know there's that Sylvester Street there, when there's four lanes like that, it just tends to promote a little bit of that. And at least that's a lot of complaint that I hear from people in that neighborhood. So, so that might prevent from people drag racing on that as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. Because you, even when you get to a signalized intersection, there's only, there's only going to be one through lane. You're not going to have two throughs. You're not going to have that rev-up-the-engine moment at the stoplight. Absolutely. Our next slide, Zach. So a little bit of data on the, the road diet benefits and kind of why they work. We do see, we've seen a twenty-nine percent reduction of all crashes at the location. In this case, we would expect to see twelve fewer collisions each year along this, this segment of West Sylvester. And this is, we've been doing road diets now for more than twenty years. Some of the earliest research was in the late nineties. I was able to write Federal Highways Guide on road diets about six or seven years ago as a consultant to the Federal Highway Administration. I really, they really have significant benefits. As you can see here, you've got all kinds of things you could do with a bicycle lane, parking, you could do some enhanced pedestrian treatments, including adding median refuge. If you think about that, that three-lane roadway now, you've got scenarios where you can actually give pedestrians the ability to have a median island in the middle. So now instead of crossing four lanes, they may just cross one lane, get into a refuge, and then just cross one more lane. And so now they're crossing one lane at a time instead of trying to cross all four at the same time. And then you can also see some intersection safety benefits. At the top graphic here, you can just see the number of conflict points, which is just essentially the, the different potential, potentialities for crashes goes down just naturally because of, of the change there. And then one thing that we find with four-lane undivided roads sometimes is you can have some blocking where a, a vehicle can be in your line of sight where you aren't able to see the vehicle behind it, or something else, a motorcycle or whatever behind it. Where when you get into a three-lane section, you tend to reduce the number of hidden vehicles. There's just less going on. And whenever you have less going on, you give drivers more opportunities to be able to address and see everything. And whenever we make life easier for the drivers, we tend to have fewer crashes. All right, so just a quick update on where we are and where we're headed, the, the current status and next steps. So as mentioned, we submitted grant applications to WashDOT in March. There is, or happens to be, I don't know if this is one that you were talking about, Steve, or if there's something else. There are a couple of other grants that WashDOT has going on right now in July. I'm not working on anything with the city on those currently. Just want to mention that that was something that's happening. In the summer and into the fall, WashDOT's going to be reviewing the grant applications that we submitted in March, and there's a chance that we may get some questions on those that they may want some answers to. And then as we go into the future, just some, some thoughts, or identifying some other needs. Again, I didn't bring you everything from the report. There's some more, there's a longer list of locations to consider looking at. The other thing we didn't do this round of the local road safety plan is incorporate any behavioral issues directly. You mentioned speed earlier. We didn't get into any kind of enforcement or education or health and equity concerns. But that's something that very much does belong in a more comprehensive safety program as we talk about traffic safety. As mentioned, we are monitoring the current programs like red light running. I'll be working on that project apparently very quickly now, over the next few weeks. Also seeking out some emerging safety needs, trying to get better at, at the crash data. Can we learn more from the data that we have? There's some more technologies that allows us now to capture things like near misses and other behaviors using machine learning and video analytics. There's a lot of really cool, interesting stuff happening with technology right now in order to help identify needs and be more proactive. What if there's a way for us to prevent those crashes before they even happen? Because we're starting to see these almost crashes. You know, you probably get a lot of phone calls that say, hey, I almost got hit by a car. I almost got hit in this on the way home from work. And those almost, we, we don't have a database for the almost yet, but we're getting to the point that we can start to capture those. And if we can start to catch these at the almost stage before they turn into real crashes, well, then we've really got something. Then we're able to truly prevent people getting hurt and killed in crashes before they even happen. And so I have a lot of passionate excitement around the ability to try to get there, to go down the list and try to identify these problems before they become reported crashes. And then never too early to be thinking about the future, that it's not too long before we're going to need to be looking at updating this plan. And there is a twenty-twenty-two grant cycle coming in that'll be due in early that year. And so in fall of twenty-twenty-one, there's going to be a call for projects from WashDOT, which means probably in summer of twenty-twenty-one, or summer this fall of twenty-twenty-one would be a great time, especially if you might want to consider developing a more comprehensive safety program at the city that looks at some of these behavioral issues that kind of grows or builds on what we're able to do quickly this year, that I think there's some opportunity there as well. Next slide, I think that's the end. Yeah, so thanks so much for, yeah, giving me the time. I'm allowing us, I would be happy, Steve or me, to take any additional questions you have here at the end.
Well, thank you for that report.
One of the things that I might add is that, yes, the two grant applications that you identified in there, Brian, are the ones that we were talking about, the Ped Bike Safety Program and the Safe Routes to School. Those are the other two grant programs that we are focusing on, and we get extra points if we haven't adopted local road safety plan. The other thing that I'd mention is that we are coordinating this work with the work that DKS is doing for Pasco on the Transportation System Master Plan. So there's a very highly coordinated effort on all of this. So with that, Brian, he'd be happy to answer any questions.
So will this be, will this be something, Mr. Worley, that will come on next week's meeting for approval?
If council's okay with it, we would like to bring it back next week for adoption. That would be great.
Okay. Anybody on the council have any questions or comments?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, sir.
Perhaps it's a little bit of a crystal ball question, but just considering, you know, the lack of funding that WashDOT is seeing, do we, do we see any kind of, or foresee any kind of issues being able to allocate these funds or, or the safety of these grant programs?
Yeah, I don't anticipate it because the funding is from the federal level. Yeah, sorry, Steve, if I stepped on you there. So this, these pots of funds, and I, and I'm not sure about the other ones, the Safe Routes to School, the pedestrian ones that Stephen just mentioned, but the big, they call it the Highway Safety Improvement Program, the HSIP. HSIP funding comes directly from the federal government. It's administered at the state level, but the state doesn't actually, it's not generated from state tax fund. And from what we've seen, this was the same thing back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, there was no reduction in HSIP. That dollar value stayed steady. In fact, it all, it goes up with each successive highway bill, which has been fantastic. So we've actually seen increases in the amount of safety funding available even in the midst of recessions, either the last one or the one we're about to go in. So I don't anticipate that. There, I guess there's a, there's a small chance that WashDOT could choose to not distribute as much of it to local agencies. That's, that is their prerogative. There are some states who don't do this. There's some states who keep most of the funding for themselves. So there is technically a chance, but they didn't do that last time. And I, I know the local programs office folks pretty well, and I don't, I've never, I haven't heard any inklings of that. I spoke with a gentleman named Matthew Enders a few weeks ago just to get a general update on how things are at WashDOT, and things are a bit dire in general, but there hasn't been any concern that the local programs office is, is going to suffer from that, or that you all will see any direct impact of that from the safety fund.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Councilman Milne.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I had a question for Mr. Chandler. Like when the, like around the Fourth of July, and then also on boat race weekend, we get a lot of traffic and people in the river view area. If we went to three lanes, do you think the traffic congestion would be the same or a better flow? I, I know it's a madhouse down there. What are your thoughts on going down to the three lanes?
Yeah, I mean, there's always a, there's always an initial concern because it feels like, wow, we're going to have half as many lanes to use if we go from four to three. And so in these specific peak moments, right, this peak weekend, or maybe these peak weeks, are we, is it, are we just going to blow up? Or is it going to be a big problem? And I mean, frankly, what we typically see is that there are enough turning movements and things happening on these four-lane cross-sections that are relatively busy. I mean, eight thousand cars a day is, that's a decent number. That's a decent amount of traffic. And I know in, you know, the west side of that is pretty residential, but the east side's not, right? There's some commercial along Sylvester there. So there's a lot of turning movement. And so I wouldn't anticipate a significant difference there. I mean, it's still, if it's backed up now, it's going to be backed up then in the future too. I, my gut says it's not going to be significantly worse, but I wouldn't say, this isn't, this isn't designed as an operational improvement treatment. This is designed as a safety treatment primarily, particularly a treatment to help with non-motorized, you know, bicycle pedestrian safety, to maybe add parking if you don't have it, or to, you know, to do some other things, just to give you some elbow room to do some new things with that space. And in the midst of that, doesn't tend to make operations worse.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. Anyone else? Well, if there's nothing else, I appreciate the report. It was thorough. Looking forward to, to seeing that on the next week's agenda then, Mr. Zabel, and we'll move forward. Thank you for that, Mr. Worley. Next, we'll move on to Item B, Community Survey and Highlights, Mr. Zabel.
So I'm going to kick it off, and our senior analyst, Angelo Pashan, will help us as well. So normally, council, you'd have seen this back in March, and we had obviously the necessary and routine limitations under the governor's order that precluded us from talking about under the governor's order that precluded us from talking about this sooner. But this National Community Survey is completed last year, compiled and distributed to us in March. We've had an opportunity to take a look at it. The results and analysis were provided in the packet. And we have a PowerPoint. Ms. Pashan is going to walk us through the highlights, and we'll just kind of tag team through this and then take questions from council. There's a lot of information tonight on this.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council. So the National Community Survey is conducted by the National Research Center and was developed to provide communities with an accurate, affordable, and easy way to assess and interpret resident opinion about important local topics. Standardization of common questions and survey methods ensure valid results. The report in your packet is broken down into community facets, which group-like questions together to provide a bigger picture for council. Here we go. And we have been surveying in Pasco since 2005, in the odd years. And that helps us to provide trends over time on specific topics. The survey information has been used by city council in developing your biannual goals. And this go-around for 2019, council selected to do the standard method, which includes a three-part mailing to 1,700 randomly selected households. It also opted to do an online open participation option, which the results are kept separate from the random survey. Council will also note that there is a, there is a comparison by geographic subgroups. So we started doing that in the 2017 survey, which is done by council districts. And there's also the Spanish translation option, which is actually provided through an online survey. And that's available not only through the random survey, but the supplemental online survey as well. So just a brief timeline of surveying. In the fall of 2019, council discussed and selected three policy or special topic areas to poll the community. One was funding for public art with the creation of the New Arts and Culture Commission, city action related to affordable housing, and then interest in the downtown amenities. And the random survey began going out in December. Each randomly selected household received a postcard just letting them know, hey, this is going to be coming, watch out for it. They received their paper survey option in early December, and they had the option to be able to complete that online, whether it was in English or Spanish. We had 16, actually, we had 17 households that selected to do the online option. One elected to do it in Spanish. And data was collected through February 7th of 2020. Now, we did have the supplemental online survey as well, which began January 10th and also collected data through February 7th. And then we did get the results in March, but of course, we all have been a little bit busy with other things going on. So this is going to be just a snapshot of the survey results. As I had said, 1,700 sample size. We did have about, we had 207 returned, undeliverable, whether it was a vacant unit, property. And then, as I had indicated, 16 completed in English online and one completed in Spanish. We had a response rate of 12%. And we had 139 items surveyed. And if you do this math, it does not equal 139. That's because we had 26 new items actually introduced into the survey. The online supplemental option, we had 289 completed surveys, which is actually 120% increase from the 2017 survey. So a big increase there. And important or noteworthy is that in 2017, for this online supplemental option, 84% of the respondents were not Hispanic. And in the 2019, we saw 55% not Hispanic. So we're seeing a shift in demographic, which is, which is great for us to see. So I'm going to get into just some of the highlights for you guys.
If I could, if I could jump in just for a second before you do that, because I, I think in looking at some of the results, you're going to see as you, as we walk through the PowerPoint, who fills out the survey impacts the results. And it's good to know a little bit about some of the demographics. And districts three, four, and five had the highest participation. About three quarters of the participation were from those three districts. On the, on the question of how long have you lived here, there's, there's a number of answers relating to zero to three years or three to five years, what have you. 70% of the respondents have lived in Pasco for 10 years or more. So that was a pretty high percentage of longtime residents. And then interestingly enough, a lot of those were very young. 25 to 44 years old represents half the respondents. And you'll see that kind of impacted in a couple of the results here and in the survey. Pasco as a place to retire went down, partly probably because the survey, the respondents are so young. They're not really thinking about retiring. Matter of fact, answers to that question dropped off by about six percents. About 6% of the respondents did not answer that question just because their retirement is not on their mind. But Pasco as a place to raise kids jumped up because folks in that demographic, age demographic, are the ones having our kids. 68% of the folks that filled out the survey are registered to vote. So you have a lot of voters, high percentage of voters filled this out. So I just want to throw those few little stats out to have you kind of keep that in mind as you're walking through, listen to some of the results.
Okay, so the first thing we're going to talk about is governance, and this is actions, decisions taken by council. And respondents, we saw an increase in positive responses to the overall direction Pasco is taking, as well as the value of services they are receiving. So we saw a 10% increase in the satisfaction of excellent or good in the direction for the direction Pasco is taking. We also saw a 13% increase in the value of services. So the picture noted here is actually the first budget award that our finance department received back in 2019. And that is really a key component of that is the fiscal policies. So I wanted to just highlight that. Community inclusion engagement. Respondents believe that Pasco, as City Manager Zabel had indicated, is a place to raise children and would recommend living here. And while it shows a significant decrease in 2019, responses for the openness and acceptance of the community towards people of diverse backgrounds remain similar to historical trends. Important for us as we go through with the inclusivity, diversity, and equity commission and the work that they will be doing. I know that interviews were held earlier this evening. And, you know, we've long had this image of Pasco. And while our respondents plan to remain here and they recommend living here, we, we still have that. We are still below the benchmark of the other comparable cities. So we still have some work to do. And a new question that was asked this, this cycle was residents from diverse backgrounds are valued and respected. And we actually received a 67% positive on that. So that'll be an important question to kind of watch over the next few cycles. For our economy, we are seeing some positive responses for the overall economic health and quality of businesses, which, you know, with greater businesses, we're keeping more of the spending here in Pasco. So we're, we're continuing with the economic development strategy. We saw a 18% in the overall economic health for positive results. 15% increase for the economic development strategies, and then 17% increase for the quality of businesses between 2017 and 2019. Public safety, responses in these areas, police, fire, ambulance, crime prevention remain steady. 73% for police services were positive. Crime prevention remains steady at 61. Ambulance or EMS, 82% positive. Fire services, 85% positive. And the overall safety in Pasco is at its highest rating since the question was introduced in 2013. And we are sitting at an overall safety positive rating of 64%. And these, this is likely due to the result of council investments such as community-oriented policing programs, the training, improved fire rating, additional staffing, and the, the investment in capital projects such as Fire Station 83 and 84 construction. Some of the examples, you know, we've talked a lot about police training and how they are well above the 24-hour mandate for the state. We have the Regional Fire Recruit School hosted by our own fire department, and then the implementation of body worn camera program back in 2019. Overall safety, the neighborhood safety or feeling safe in your neighborhood during the day is actually at a 90%. So majority of our, you know, community is feeling very safe in their neighborhoods. And the downtown safety has actually increased as well to 66%. So we're seeing some positive there. Transportation, we just had some conversation about some transportation. And responses, respondents did indicate that the overall transportation is a top priority to them in the next two years. And while we saw a significant decrease in the overall quality of our transportation system, we did see a 20% decrease, you'll see in the numbers. The ease of travel actually remained very similar to 2017. Respondents were more likely to have carpool, walked, and biked, or used public transportation in 2017, or from the 2017 survey, which highlights an additional awareness to the alternative modes of transportation being used in our community. And as City Manager Zabel had stated earlier, that is likely due to who has responded to the survey this go-around. You know, they're looking for greater connectivity on biking and walking.
I think the, yeah, the, the age demographic, again, I think plays in here. And as Ms. Pashan mentioned, the respondents, this time, there was a much higher percentage of people that had either biked or walked in lieu of driving than we've, than we've had in the past. And so that's going to expose some thing, you know, they're exposed to some things. Maybe they didn't have a bike lane where they thought they should have one or, and it's even interesting, you dig down into the responses, and I can name one council member that's probably been there looking around at those numbers. But you'll see that by district, if you have good bike, like the districts that are near the trail or have good access to the, to the River Trail or along 182, score our transportation system higher than districts that, that may not have as easy access to one of those big bike trails. Which make, it makes sense when you're, when you're valuing that multimodal aspect.
And I'm going to move into the policy questions that council had approved for this survey. So the first policy question was, the city of Pasco is exploring ways to take action to increase the development or, and/or supply of more affordable housing units. To what extent would you support or oppose the city exploring each of these, the following? And I didn't know if City Manager Zabel wanted to talk anything about those.
Well, we'll have, yeah, we're going to have some discussion on, on House Bill 1406 in a bit. But I, I think these, these results are telling folks generally are sharing that they're okay with incentives or developments, standards that would allow for more affordable housing. I think 1406 gave us a couple of options that we're going to talk about. And, you know, we've had some other discussions about infill vacant lots and so forth. And that, CD Director and myself, Mr. White, have been kind of kicking around some ideas there that we'll be able to be bringing to council probably in the, in the following months as we, as we move forward with, try to fill up some of these lots that haven't been built on in years.
The second policy question was, talking about downtown, what would bring people to downtown more often? And people really like food from the results. I don't think that's any surprise. I don't think that, you know, anyone would be surprised by that. But very comparable between the, the online likely to bring them down and the random household. And then we had a question on public funding for public art. And the respondents actually identified art and culture as a very important item for them in the next two years. Pasco did receive a lower rating than comparable benchmark cities, but remains similar to previous years' surveys. And the policy question regards to how, how much would you support or oppose using public funds to have public art? Majority respondents were very supportive of using public funds to help pay for public art projects. So as we get the Arts and Culture Commission going, you know, we'll have our first meeting by the end of the month. We're excited to start getting some of those projects kind of going. And residents indicated more cultural opportunities would bring them to downtown. Just as a quick wrap-up, the community survey is another tool for city council to consider when you're setting your goals. The information can provide useful trends and areas of opportunity. And prior to this survey, council had already identified areas of opportunity and acted on them, both creating commissions, one for arts and culture, and one for inclusion, diversity, and equity. Any questions?
Any questions from council, from Ms. Pashan? All right, well, thank you for that report. It was thorough and it is useful. You know, there is a lot of things that, that can manipulate these numbers and a lot of different ways to look at things. But nevertheless, these are, these are good items to have. Unfortunately, we didn't have a retreat to talk more about these, but, but definitely going to be useful as, as we move forward. So thank you very much for that report. All right. Next on the agenda is our House Bill 1406.
Well, Mr. White's going to help us out, but Steve, speaking of affordable housing, and our last question, Director White's going to, excuse me, I'm sorry. Senior Planner Jacob Gonzalez is going to lead us through this.
Mr. Gonzalez, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to talk about House Bill 1406. As you may remember, we brought this item to the council in September of 2019 and introduced House Bill 1406, and actually, House Bill 1923, which is the state's legislature efforts at increasing affordable housing opportunities in the state of Washington as it becomes a higher and higher priority across the country. So House Bill 1406 was an incentive program, or I'm sorry, a revenue sharing program that allows cities and counties to access a portion of the sales tax to be redistributed back at the local level. And so there were two requirements for House Bill 1406 to be eligible to receive your portion of the sales tax. And the first was the approval of a resolution, and city council moved forward with that approval in January with Resolution 3937, declaring the resolution of intent to declare the authorization. And we're back with the second part of the requirement, which is the actual adoption of the ordinance. And I want to be, again, I want to reiterate that this isn't a new tax or additional funding, I'm sorry, additional tax on anything. It's actually us allowing to get money back and distribute it at the local level using local strategies. And I think one of the benefits of House Bill 1406 versus some other funding programs that become available is that it's extremely flexible. The, the effort is obviously is that aimed at creating affordable housing opportunities. And so there's different opportunities for the city through the options, including acquiring, rehabilitating existing or creating new units, assisting with nonprofit or public agencies that work with affordable housing construction, or rental assistance programs, which the city Pasco does have an existing rental assistance program. So we're eligible to use funding for all of those or something else, as long as it's aimed at affordable housing creation in the city. So that's really one of the benefits about this specific bill is the flexibility and the broadness that it allows us to utilize local dollars for local opportunities here. We did do a little bit of homework, and we wanted to make sure that we took into account the existing plans that have priorities, goals, and policies at affordable housing. So the draft comprehensive plans housing element has a series of goals and policies which we were able to pull from. You'll see some of those listed in the draft strategies in your council report. And also the Tri-Cities Home Consortium, which Pasco is one of three cities. And also the Tri-Cities Home Consortium, which Pasco is one of three cities, a part of that, also has its priority needs, which we pulled from that as well. This this wasn't, uh I guess it wasn't necessary to reinvent the wheel here in terms of identifying the areas in which we want to um increase opportunities. For funding uh for some of these programs. Uh it may be a little bit more creative on the implementation of it. And I think that's the exciting part of House one fourteen oh six is that it allows us to either use uh the funding every year. Or I think a little bit more of a proactive and uh maybe a little bit um, I think, long-term success. Maybe pooling some of the funding over a series of years, two, four, five, whatever it may be, to uh help uh with a major project. Now, we're eligible up to hundred and five thousand dollars annually, uh or about two point one million over the twenty-year duration. It is a twenty-year timeframe. Um obviously, some of these numbers are gonna be lower in in twenty twenty and likely twenty twenty-one. And so staff's intent um with uh conversations we've had with Benton Franklin Human Services, also the CAC office. Is to maybe uh to be very methodological, method, be be very strategic with how we wanna implement the use of these funds. Uh there's obviously some opportunities to um uh to help existing programs. But again, because of the flexibility, we wanna make sure that we can utilize this um in its best way uh possible. We don't know when we're gonna have this opportunity again. We know it's a need in our community and across the state. And uh the legislation twenty nineteen um uh came through with some uh funding for us. So uh there is a draft ordinance along with the resolution that you approved in September. There's also the resolution, uh I'm sorry, the o- ordinance adopted by Franklin County. Uh as they also moved forward with um their effort as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I have, I do remember talking about this and there was com- confusion on whether it was a new tax or not. And and you made it very clear that it's not. Uh I would be interested, uh how how um with our neighboring cities. Uh are are we uh doing this equally uh with our neighboring uh cities? Or is it just Pasco trying, i- is this just Pasco doing something to try to get the the extra funding for this?
Well, well, every city and county in the state of Washington had the same opportunities that Pasco does to um move forward with a resolution and ordinance. I I'm not certain what Benton County um has moved forward with. I know that they've had discussions at the county commissioner's office over there. Uh the Benton Franklin Human Services uh staff had spoken with them, but I'm not quite certain on what they moved forward with. But I do know that Spokane County, uh Walla Walla, Ellensburg, uh Yakima, Wenatchee, a little bit closer to this side of the of the state. Have moved forward with their ordinances uh to take advantage really of funding that uh we get to keep local.
All right. Anybody else from the council have any questions for Mr. Gonzalez?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Gonzalez for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Um I had a lot of interest.
Go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Okay, thank you. Um I I had a lot of interest in the uh fir- first round, of course, and and seeing as that was uh progressing. And how much we didn't know and how long it took us to to know something about this. I really appreciate um the fact that we have this opportunity. And I look forward to seeing what sort of cost benefit analysis and and where we end up um, where staff ends up recommending recommending we uh. We invest these funds on bank for the buck. Um I really appreciate that this is probably some of the most flexible money we can have for a program like this. Um that we will perhaps ever see uh for for something like that coming out of the state. So um I think um I think it it would be useful to be creative and really see um where the need is. Um maybe unmet by current existing funding uh packages and funding sources. Um so I um I know you're uh you're you're really looking for the for the innovation and the next step. And I I encourage you to keep that up and I look forward to seeing what you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarado, did you have a comment or a question?
Uh yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Um the, I had more of a question of a, I guess, a hypothetical. Hypothetical way of using these funds. Um I know that in um certain areas of the city, there are uh problem properties. That uh perhaps maybe are abandoned or have like um a- absent landlords that, you know, can create problems for the rest of the community. Or, you know, squatting or things of that nature. Uh could these uh funds hypothetically be used to rehab those uh? And re- and resell them for affordable housing or reuse them for affordable housing? And it was a very specific kind of way of using. I'm just curious if that's a opportunity we have.
Yes, uh that that's correct. We we can. Obviously, we'll put some stipulations within um when that funding is dispersed. Uh that the housing obviously must meet uh sixty percent uh at or below the area's adjusted median income. So that is a requirement. Uh so that will have to be written somehow into the contract when these things end up being dispersed. And also keep in mind, um a hundred and five thousand dollars, uh I don't know how far that can go. And getting back to maybe uh Councilman Maloney's question about how to disperse this and for the best ROI. Uh it'll be city staff's uh effort over the next few months to determine what is the best ROI. What does it cost to incentivize, really incentivize uh either the private side or public agencies to begin to assist with uh with creating a little bit more. Uh opportunities for housing in the city of Pasco.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for that report, Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Mayor, this is Rick White. Uh I did wanna add one thing uh for council's information. Um Jacob has also taken the lead on House Bill nineteen twenty-three, which is currently working its way through the planning commission. And that involves uh a uh actually a a state reimbursement of staff time. That's necessary to examine three distinct strategies for perhaps providing more affordable housing in uh Pasco. And those are, as I said, are working their way through the planning commission and should uh come to council's attention roughly this time next year.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. White. Uh Councilwoman Roach, did you have a question?
Uh you knew it was me. Thank you, Mayor Martinez. Um I do have a question for Jacob or for Rick. Um and that was, when we talk about affordable housing in this, are we referring to um Housing Authority? Or are we referring to diversity of housing, like increasing medium to high-density housing in Pasco?
Uh we we can work with the Franklin County Housing Authority. That is an oper- that that's an option for us. Um but uh the way the bill is written is that it allows us to be bigger than, or I guess, expand beyond. I I think what most folks might think what affordable housing is. And getting back to what Mr. White had mentioned with House Bill nineteen twenty-three. That is a series of code amendments that allow some flexibility in the zoning code, and this is the incentive part. Uh that the city may be able to provide to the private developers to uh to maybe encourage a little bit more diversity in the housing that's constructed in Pasco. Is we've allowed you to build more diverse hu- diverse housing, and here's an incentive to build it. And getting back to, I think, a question that Mayor Matt Watkins had at the time, September, was kind of the entire toolkit that the city is building. And I think we're starting to see that come together with uh some upcoming uh efforts at increasing uh flexibilities on our standards. And now we're coming through with some slight incentives. So I think we're starting to build kind of a toolkit for the private or public agencies to begin to to take advantage of that.
Thank you for that response. And just quickly, the draft strategies that we see in our report, one through six. These are not in order of priority. They are just a a list, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um yeah, I'm really excited to see what you come up with. Are you seeking something in particular from council members right now in the way of uh feedback? As to what our priorities are between one through six?
Uh I that would that would be helpful. Uh what we'd first like uh with your with your council's approval, obviously, is uh we'd bring back an official ordinance. Uh to be uh approved by council. We would send that over to the Department of Revenue. Um and then begin uh that process of receiving the funds within uh, I think, no sooner than thirty days after the approval or after we send over the documentation. And then I think throughout the next few months, maybe throughout the rest of twenty twenty and early twenty twenty-one, we begin to refine the strategies and keep them kind of varied. Uh be- because housing needs will vary over the next twenty years. So a- again, one of the benefits of fourteen oh six is that we can change this as necessary depending on what the local needs are.
Okay, then. Well, thank you so much.
All right. We're looking forward for for that for, uh would that would that come next week or when do you think that would that would come to the council?
Yeah, we we can bring that back next week. Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Uh any other questions or comments? If not, uh thank you, Mr. Jacob, for that report and uh looking forward to to seeing that come to fruition. Okay, next on the list is item D, uh presentation, ACS Park Project Maintenance Update. Mr. Radkai.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and uh members of council. Good evening once again, Zach Radkai, Administrative and Community Services Director. The item brought before you this evening is uh an update from the Administrative Community Services Department. We en- encompass a number of divisions, one of which is Parks, uh Facilities, and Recreation. And um there's about three projects that we currently have under design that we wanna highlight and present to the council. We've gotten a number of uh inquiries that I've filtered through the city council, but also directly into our office as to the status of these projects. So we figured we'd bring them as a group to this body. And uh we also wanna update just on our maintenance programs and what we're doing out in the community for our existing parks as well. So we've had this listed as grant-funded projects. If you can see on this uh the new map as of today, it's a listing of all of our parks. The three stars, the western star is Chapel Hill Park, which is funded solely by park development funds. The two stars uh marking on the eastern side is the Schlegel Park Boat Basin and the A Street Sporting Complex. Which are RCO-grant funded projects from the state of Washington, um but with a local match as well. So we'll go into each one of those uh a little bit more in depth. So beginning with the Boat Basin and Schlegel Park, um this is one of the few boat docks, uh or excuse me, boat ramp. Uh locations on this side of the Columbia River. And if any of you have been down there. Um I took Councilwoman uh Roach on a tour just uh two weeks ago in this area. It's an existing park and it's showing its age. Um the boat ramp to the south is unusable and currently blocked by ecology blocks. Uh the dock has significant uh just long-term damage just from, you know, the its age. And it's not ADA compliant for wheelchair users. Uh the restroom, which is up towards uh the roadway on the top of the hill, um has been closed for a number of years. And it's a frequent target for graffiti. And um we like to say it has a green roof, but that's not any new trend in environmentally friendly design. It just has vegetation on the roof. Um it's also got a dirt parking lot. There's really, there's some former park amenities down there, like a volleyball court. But really nothing uh to show of note in that area. In this area, it's also home to um our our dock and the Columbia Marine Center, which is a primary uh tenant of ours. And they do a lot of boat repairs and engine repairs, sails, things like that. So the new concept that we're working on currently, it's under design, um for the Boat Basin and Schlegel Park, shows expanded parking. Um I'm gonna use the mouse cursor and I think it'll show up to our 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 webinar users here, our virtual council members. Um we have additional parking down here. This is also a new overlook area with picnic tables. This is the existing boat ramp, which will have new precast concrete ramp panels. There'll be a new um uh what they call boarding floats, but a new dock that's ADA compliant. There will be uh six-boat trailer parking spaces, um pull-through parking spaces, which if you're like me, driving a trailer, it's kind of difficult to back up sometimes. Um with a diff- uh uh a lot better circulation for vehicles and and folks wanting to launch their boats. There'll also be additional boat parking um elsewhere on the property as well. We do have a new um ADA-compliant restroom coming in, not at the top of the hill, on the northern part of the park. But right here at the main user area as well on in this area. Um and then future uh playground and park amenities that um can be brought in at a future date. So what we're looking at, the funding on this is through a boat facilities grant. Six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars from the state is the grant money on this, seventy-four percent funding of the project. The local match is coming through city real estate excise taxes, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, twenty-six percent. Total allocation for the project is just over eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. This is under design right now. Um as uh the Parks Division gets more uh involved and and in greater detail on the design. We will bring that forth to uh city council with an update.
Thank you, Mr. Radkai. I I just wanna note, I often see a lot of activity going on at that park. And it's such a high prospect for more revenue for just people coming in and using that place and then using the boat uh basin there. So I'm really looking for, this is long overdue. Um we've been getting emails about this for quite some time now. So yes, I'm I'm looking forward for for this.
We're definitely excited. I drove down there this afternoon. There was a number of vehicles there, a number of empty boat trailers. So people are still using it as a boat launch. And um the the personnel that's working on the repainting of the Blue Bridge launches their aquatic vehicles from this area as well. So it is still well-used, but we hopefully uh will provide more opportunities for greater use in the future. Second, um project funded by RCO is the A Street Sporting Complex. This is located just south of Kurtzman Park on A Street, east of Oregon Avenue. It's a multi-phase project and the ultimate phase is for up to ten soccer fields in this area. With parking, we're looking at playgrounds for um families in that area and restrooms as well. So phase one, what ACS is working on right now is in the um sort of the hashed area up here. And what it's bringing in is access off of A Street, um parking for the area and three soccer fields. Um to begin this project and kick it off in the first phase, uh so to speak, no pun intended there. Uh this is funded, uh sixty-one percent of this is an RCO youth athletic facility grant, three hundred and fifty thousand. Local match through our park development fund and uh two hundred and twenty-one thousand, uh which is thirty-nine percent of the uh project there. So this first phase is just about five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. And um it's currently under design as well. We are undergoing so cultural resource exploration as required by the state. And um as this comes to further fruition, we will uh update council on its progress. And then finally Chapel Hill Park. This was one of our longer-awaited parks uh in the region. Um it is south of one eighty-two in a really high-developed area with a lot of building going on. Um you can see from the vicinity map, it's it's essentially southeast of the Giza Stadium Soccer Complex, but on the other side of the freeway. Um this is estimated to be about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. It is funded through park development uh Zone Two funding. And uh it's in the thirty percent design phase. So the design that we have on on uh on the screen right here just kind of shows just some very basic elements. But what the overall viewpoint is, and this was dictated through community meetings that occurred a couple of years ago. Um we're looking at a tot-aged playground, so very little kids, um a playground that's geared with amenities towards ages five through twelve. Uh basketball court, sort of a picnic canopy shelter to provide shade for patrons of the park. Um restroom is in the ultimate uh uh phase on this project. Uh there will be an irrigated turf flat playing surface, so if you wanna get a soccer game going or have a practice. Um there's a walking loop around this area. It's about a five-acre park in total, but this walking loop will be um three tenths of a mile. So think about, you could calculate it out and and get some exercise if you wanna run a mile, that sort of thing. And I think one of the key things that the neighborhood brought uh to the northwest of this, directly adjacent to this property, is a a large apartment complex. And in the lower uh left corner, we have a community garden slated here um for apartment residents that may wanna have their own garden spot. And uh really bring forth the community together. And we got a lot of great uh intent with this project to have a lot of community involvement in its construction as well. So before I launch into maintenance, is there any questions of council on these three new projects?
Well, I was uh just wanna make comment. Uh I was one of the council members that attended those meetings at Chihuahua uh High School when they were designing this park. And uh yeah, there's a lot of people desperately waiting for this to come. When when is a projected date that this can get started on again?
We're at thirty percent design. We should be at sixty percent design soon. It's our intent to start construction later this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. And then from a maintenance standpoint, um as we talk about parks maintenance and in particular during the pandemic. We looked at a lot of uh staffing needs and where we needed to allocate our staff. A couple of months ago, we brought forth an uh reorganization of our parks and maintenance crews, adding five, excuse me, seven new full-time employees to the staff. Um with the pandemic, with some reallocation of staff, and now with our growth of staff and hiring, we are um ramping up our parks maintenance. And uh wanted to just kind of discuss that with the city council and just show you what uh park maintenance priorities are. So we allocate our crews into four zones, we call them. So these are four crew groups. Um Zone One has a number of parks in the western end of Pasco, uh the highlight of which is uh the very large Chihuahua Park. And the Sandifer Boulevard Maintenance. Zone Two uh takes care of that uh that northern part of the western end of Pasco. It encompasses the softball and soccer complex as well as the Burden Boulevard uh Maintenance. Zone Three is right smack dab in the middle. Um you get the Memorial Pool, Memorial Park Maintenance with this group, as well as Wade Park along the Columbia River. And Zone Four takes up the eastern end where uh City Hall, Volunteer Park, the Bus Train Depot. And uh um those areas uh are are taken care of in that in that zone. and those areas are taken care of in that zone. So what we look at with parks maintenance, fully staffed, mowing once per week of these areas, due to staffing levels and depending on the fluctuation of our seasonal staffing, sometimes there's growth regulator applied to the boulevards to keep them green and looking good, but not growing as quickly so we can keep up with the maintenance. Garbage is emptied in the parks on every Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Except Chihuahua and Wade Park, which are some of our heavily-used parks and larger parks, those are emptied daily. What our seasonal staff typically handles is weed control and sidewalk blowing, so blowing the grass clippings off the sidewalk after the mowing crews go through, as well as our daily restroom cleaning. Irrigation repairs, we do as needed. We do a little bit, if there's a number of repairs occurring at the same time, some of our higher-traffic, higher-priority parks get hit, get fixed first. But irrigation repairs and checking we do as needed. And then some of the COVID-specific parks maintenance that we've been doing. We've been taping and putting construction tape on our playgrounds. Those are closed due to the social distancing measures put in place by the governor. We update that taping on the weekends when they're primarily utilized. We do have a personnel checking that daily. We do have signage placed for park closures in English and Spanish. Those are checked daily as well. And our restrooms, which were previously closed, you know, we opened them a lot later because of the pandemic. They are open now. Open eight to five. And we have seasonal crews going through, making sure they're clean, they're stocked for patrons, and then locking them at night to prevent theft and damage. And we are continually recruiting for seasonal staff. Speaking with some of my counterparts in the region, all cities are pretty impacted with that, trying to get as many seasonal staff personnel to help out. But we're bringing them on as we can get them in to help out with our efforts in the parks. So just a real quick update for city council this evening, and I'm here for any questions or any comments from staff or council.
Thank you, Mr. Racki. Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Racki?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to say I really enjoyed the tour of all of the facilities that you showed in the first half of your presentation. And appreciate that we've locked down grant funding for the majority of these. That is extremely helpful to us from a fiscal perspective. So thank you for your hard work.
You bet.
Just a quick, anybody else before I go to the next item? If not, I just have a quick question. Now, is there any, there's anything that you're doing, including in projects, including a restroom over at Wade Park for the boat launch there? Not at this time?
Adding a restroom at the boat launch? We can certainly check in on that. That's not included in our projects at this time, but we can work through that through our capital planning.
Well, there's an outhouse there that's used really regularly. I was just wondering. We can discuss that later though.
Sure. Yeah, I think the parcel to the west side of the boat launch. The non-Army Corps of Engineer parcel. Yeah, the city owns. Probably would be a place to look.
Thank you. All right. With that, thank you, Mr. Racki, for that report. Appreciate all your work you're doing there. Next is the renewal of prosecu- prosecutorial services agreement. And I believe, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll lead it off. Assistant City Attorney needs to jump in. He's certainly welcome to. So Brown Bell and Rio has providing municipal prosecution services since two thousand nine for the city. And those specifically are municipal misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors and civil infractions. So those are the types of cases that Mr. Rio, particularly, has been prosecuting on behalf of the city. And they've done a good job for us. The proposal is for a four-year agreement. Agreement would have an evergreen clause in it, which means unless or until one or two of the parties gave notice, the contract would continue going. That way we avoid a contract coming out of, or expiring on us. And so this, this contract actually expired the end of June. And the proposal is a four-year, as I mentioned, a four-year agreement, starting off with about twenty, I think it's a twenty thousand dollar a month retainer, which is about just a little bit more than it is right now. Three percent escalator in it and on a, excuse me, July one date. So next year, it'd be three percent on top of the twenty thousand dollars per month. And we recommend to council to award that contract. So I think the total over the four years is a little bit under a million dollars.
One of those necessary evils. Any comments from the council, from Mr. Zabel or Mr. Ferguson? All right, if not, then we can just add that to the agenda for next week. All right, well, thank you for those reports and those items. Next, we go to miscellaneous discussion. Do you have anything you want to add, Mr. Zabel?
Well, I do have a few things, and I don't know if we can get a picture. We had it there. But picture, hopefully see on the screen here in a second. And that is a business reopening kit, and that's what they looks like in terms of products. You can see masks and floor stickers, and you can see the Plexiglas shield for the customer. So forth. So we put together a hundred of those kits. We have about, we have about fifty of the actual shields. Not every, thinking not every business is necessarily going to need the shield. We'll be distributing them at the farmer's market this Wednesday from eleven-thirty to one P M. Council's certainly welcome to participate, provided we don't have more than four of you there. But I do want to give a shout out to our senior management analyst, Angela Bishan, who you heard from earlier tonight. She's led the charge on this project, working with Pasco Chamber and D P D A, researching options and designing the kits and then procuring them locally from local vendors, some of the pieces like the vinyl and so forth. So the idea of the business kit, just real quick, started as actually somewhat of an impractical idea from another city where they were talking about gallons of of hand sanitizer and wall-mounted, what do you call it, pump units for those. And we were looking for something a little bit more simple. It'd be a little easier to distribute, a little easier to get out. Started looking at the governor's requirements for businesses to open and having to do with signing and spacing and masks and things like that. And so Angela got to thinking, put her thinking cap on and came up with this kit, you know, drilling down and making, having some good thoughts and in terms of what might be needed and helpful to business owners, and then looking for some local businesses to help supply those materials. So I wanted to share that with council. We're pretty happy about it and we're excited to be able to hand those out on Wednesday. And just a side note, they're geared more towards our small businesses when we expect those will go pretty quick. So I mentioned last week some thoughts on council retreat. If I could, council indulged me a few minutes. So biennial retreat, that's historically been that effort where the council reviews and updates its vision, sets the course for the next several years and the goals for the next biennium and beyond. In some areas, we've seen where we've made course corrections and that's all we've needed. Needed, we need to account for progress or maybe a mission accomplished, which we have a number of those from your last goal set. Need to adjust for some changed circumstances, and I think we can all relate to changed circumstances at the moment. In others, we have some new initiatives that are developing, recognizing some new opportunities. So there's a lot that could impact council. There's a lot in play that can impact council's twenty, twenty, twenty-one goals. COVID certainly. And meeting limitations and limits on sports and business-related businesses, as well as business-related revenues and tourism and tourism-related revenues. So those are things that I think we need to be thinking about. We'll have a newly-minted comp plan. And after, after you complete your comp plan, you know, most likely we're going to be talking about development regulations and downtown and sign code and zoning issues and things like that to really start to turn our comp plan, our vision into reality. We'll have, in the process of a transportation master plan. We heard a little bit tonight about multimodal and walkability being things that our citizens are talking about, thinking about. We heard that in the National Community Survey. And also got some good feedback on transit. I think folks are, I think if I recall right, seventy percent positive on transit by folks. And so people are starting to use it. Of course, we all hear about congestion. So those will be some things that we'll want to keep in mind. Major phases of the process itself, our goal-setting process. So collecting that information, we're finishing a lot of that up now and preparing it for distribution at council, including getting it, how we're going to get that raw info to the public as part of your process as well. Staff proposed initiatives, we're finalizing those. I talked to our, who I'd like to use for our mediator today, Dave Mercer, which number you know him. And Dave's made himself available in early August to work with us on this between sometime within the first week or two. And he's recommending we really, because of the significant change in challenges of COVID and the impacts COVID are going to create for any organization, Dave's recommended we dig, dig a little bit deep into a SWOT or strengths, weaknesses, opportunities analysis through a facilitated process. Then we would evaluate, synthesize all this information and collectively develop our comprehensive policy positions and alternatives and review our draft and adopt. So I think we can probably have most of that done towards the end of August with the drafts and council a chance to look at it at workshop and then get to adoption. We'll probably be able to get the materials out to you all prior, within the next couple of weeks. Be similar to the normal binder process, but it's probably going to be more electronic just for ease of distribution and so forth. Happy to make binders if we need to. And in terms of of meeting, I know there was some discussion last week about maybe, and I, I can't disagree. I think it's far more valuable for us to all be sitting in a room face-to-face and have the opportunity to talk. But we're not in that environment right now. We might be by August, but I seriously doubt it. And it's probably going to have to be a go-to meeting as much as I don't, or well, probably a series of them. I'm not, I'm not a fan of that for this kind of work. I did talk to Dave about that, Mr. Mercer. And he says he's been successful in doing that. It's, you know, for some other cities, it's not, it's not as easy as all sitting in a room and really getting to know each other better and, and the give and take that that personal exposure to one another has. But we're going to have to do what we're going to have to do here. And I guess that's part of the reason why he sold me on the SWOT analysis as well is we're in a way different environment, and we will be through at least twenty twenty-one. Federal government's talking about a vaccine to come out early in the year potentially. And we have three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and thirty million people that have to get a shot. That's going to take a while. It's not going to happen overnight. And so with that, that's what I, what I had for this evening. Happy to take any questions or suggestions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, for that. Yeah, it's unfortunate. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Zabel? Okay, well, thank you for that report. We're going to move right along to item number seven. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. The city council will now meet in executive session. The purpose of this executive session is to consider acquisition of real estate and establish the sell price or lease amount of real estate. The executive session is expected to last approximately twenty minutes and will be attended by our city manager, our city attorney and Director Racki. No actions will be taken during the executive session. At the conclusion of the executive session, I will reconvene the meeting of the city council, entertain any action desired by the council, and then adjourn the meeting. Now, the last time we had a executive session, there was a lot of questions by the community thinking that, you know, we disappeared for a while, then came back and they didn't quite understand what was going on. But the executive session is held privately. And again, we're going to, we're going to keep this meeting here. We're going to go to executive session and another meeting. And then we're going to come back to address any issues and adjourn the meeting. So with that, we will take a five-minute break. So at eight fifty-five, we'll meet in our executive session. Thank you. Thank you.